All right, good evening. I'm sorry for our delay. We had, our other meeting went long. We're sorry about that. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Cumberland School Committee on Thursday, March 28th, 2024 at 7:14 PM. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mrs. Feather.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Okay, next item on the agenda, Student Government Report. Student Government Activities.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Sam Henderson.
And I'm Grace Lambert.
And we're here to update you on the activities of student government here at Cumberland High School. Our annual Pennies for Patients fundraiser to raise money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society has highlighted the month of March. Between teacher competition, online donations, and raffling administration parking spots, we have raised over $4,000, but we are not done yet.
We will also be hosting a bowling tournament to raise even more money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Local businesses have already sponsored $1,500 that will go directly to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The tournament will be held at Walnut Hill Bowlings on Sunday, April 28th, and you will all be invited to attend. Thank you for your time.
Oh, I have a question.
I have a question.
Is Mr. Curran still doing the competition with the kids for pennies for patients? Is, how is he doing?
He's very proud to be winning at the moment.
He's winning?
He's very, yeah. He is. He's been killing it with his online donations.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, all right. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. Raffle for the parking spots. Can you give us a little bit more information about that?
Yeah, so they're raffling tickets at lunch, and I think our principal, Adolfo Plaza, has volunteered to make the hike up from Tucker Parking Lot a couple days during, I think, once the weather warms up a little bit. For, there's, I think it's a week maybe that the parking spots will go for, and the student will get to park up top. So those are selling really well.
Fantastic. All right, I think that that should, that should really spur some competition.
Oh, it has.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item A, Approval of Minutes from the regular meeting, 314, 2024, the special meeting, 37, 2024, and 321, 2024, the approval of minutes from the executive session, 314, 2024, the school bus inspection reports from 37, 2024, 38, 2024, and 312, 2024. Motion to approve by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Dreszek.
Good evening. We have two appointments this evening. Effective 4/1, 2024, we have school psychologist, Deanna Dianjou, and effective 3/17, 2024, we have Matthew Smith, custodian at the Wellness Center, and that would be a third shift position. We have two resignations for teachers that are currently on a leave of absence this year. We have Susan Miller, Special Education at Cumberland High School, and Kyle Santos. She was a Special Education Coordinator. This was her third year on a leave of absence. And we have a retirement of a teacher currently on a personal leave of absence. She's been with us for 20 years. That's Linda Rosasco, Special Educator at Cumberland Hill, and coaching, coaching as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dreszek. Next is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, Madam Chair. First up, this-
Wait, I'm sorry, sorry. No, no, I do this, I do this too many times. Hold on. I skipped something. I would do a report out of the executive session meeting. Actually, we have a few. 37, 2024, 314, 2024, and 328, 2024. Report out of executive session votes. We did not take any votes in those meetings. And the next is vote to seal the minutes of those executive sessions. Motion to seal by Mrs. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith and Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Now, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening. This past month has been, Mike, hit it. Art in Our Schools Month. This first display I wanted to show you, this is at community school. Art actually came to community. I want to thank Terry Villanova. This is an artist, Henry Rousseau, and the students got to see his work at community schools. I wanted you to see that. Next, we have some art from different students in different schools. Here on the left, we have Sydney Lapore, CHS Grade 11. It's called Break the Border. Next, we have, oh, To Start My Garden, Andrea Rabello, McCourt, Grade 8. And right, we have Joe Spila. Thank you. Spila. And that's Garvin School, Warm Sun, Cool Moon. Thank you for that. Next, Mike. Here, we have Value Painted Hearts, Page Homes, Cumberland Hill, Grade 4. Down below, BF Norton, Joe Gotic, Grade 3, One Point Perspective, Shooting Stars. And upper left side here, Imaginary Creatures, Mason Rabello, Ashton, Grade 2. And music's also been active this past month. Here on the left, we have the Clef Singers performing with the RI Philharmonic, the Women Trailblazers in Music Concert in Honor of Women's History Month. Down below, you can see we have the 13th Annual CHS Variety Show titled Royals. And also, you can see the pictures on the right side. We have the CHS Band and Chorus in action. So I wanted you to see that. Also, I should say, we're trying to get them to come live to our meeting, and we're trying to get them for the next meeting to come play some, some songs, and some, some songs for you guys, some music. Next, please. Also, McCourt Course, All-State Band Rehearsal, that they are in action. And Ms. Dolan's First Grade, a community performing a dance routine from The Nutcracker. And the right, the Pee Bruins Game, our first second grade choir performed America the Beautiful to start the hockey game this past month. And I had the pleasure of going to this event. It's called Cake Wars at Community, and the students make these creations. And it was, it was a great time watching these, these students make these, these great cakes. And that was at community school in the new cafeteria. That was a great event. And now that brings us to our regularly occurring event, construction. Things are picking up pace now, and that's good to see. At Ashton, on the far left, you're seeing bathrooms now. They're being sheet rocked. You're seeing here the addition for Ashton. That's the stage bump out. That's what the stage will look like. They're going to blow the wall out once the stage is in. Over here, you see walls cut out now where the windows go in the hallways at Ashton. And over here, once again, you can see this is also some windows that are going in. Next up, once again, more windows cut out. This will be the Ashton Secretaries greeting area. That's the glass, and that's what it looks like right there. Over here, once again, open concept. They open up the wall here. That's all, all window. And that's, once again, a bathroom. It's all being closed up now, so that's, that's a good thing. Next. Over here, the ceiling's going in. I was there this morning. They're actually cutting away at this to make the windows fit today. That's going in right now. And they're actually tiling the bathrooms right now as we speak at Ashton. That's, that's moving along. Will's also finishing what we can. So in the new wing, we're already ready to go. It's already been waxed and ready. That's one of the new, new classrooms. This is what it looks like in the new common area. The lights are in, and the ceiling is in. That's, that's really nice to see. And this is part of Mike's world. All these wires have to go somewhere. They have a home. All these wires, the blue ones, the white ones, they all go somewhere. And that's all, all being run. Over at community school, you may have noticed the playground is not there anymore. It's being redone. And now it's all been dug down. Every stake, it represents a spot. They're going to put something in the ground. That's going to be starting next week. That all goes in. As I mentioned last month, playgrounds are underway in the planning stages for Garvin, Ashton, and Cumberland Hills. So those are all, the good news here in playgrounds is, this playground had a 30-week lead time to the equipment. It's now down to 12 weeks for our next three. So that's exciting. So I think they'll get them in probably late summer, fall for the, the three. This should be done, I think, end of next week. We should see a lot of progress. So that's exciting. And I know the question always is, are we on time at Ashton? The answer is yes. We are on time. And it looks like they'll turn it over to us some point, probably mid-August, I'm thinking. That's always the timeframe for that. But it is encouraging to see things coming into place right now. So happy to answer any questions on the construction. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees, starting with Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this evening. We have five resolutions for the entire committee. In our facilities update, we've got some updates from Mr. DeJesus. Couple exciting new things. First of all, the NCMS stage is completed. It was being redone. The lights at Garvin, which had been an issue with the community, the adjacent neighbors and the direction of the lights, they've been reconfigured, and those are also done. And Dr. Thornton just mentioned this too, but we have a full-time custodian, third shift for the Wellness Center, which has been a concern for faculty and the community as well. So hopefully that'll address some of the cleanliness issues and, at the Wellness Center. We also had a presentation by Jillian Belangia from Mr. Demana's Assistant Superintendent Office about a professional development opportunity, which was approved by Fiscal Management Subcommittee and will be presented to the full committee momentarily. And we also discussed the bus contract, which we were, had agenda tonight as well. So, yeah, busy night at fiscal, and we did it in 35 minutes, which was hard. So it was, it was, it was an ambitious agenda for a short amount of time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update, Mr. Fiorella.
All Season Procedures did not meet this week. We will be meeting Monday night at 5:30 in the Assistant Superintendent's Office.
Achieving Communication Subcommittee Update, we also didn't meet, but we do need to get our next meeting on the calendar. Next, District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update, Mrs. Rogalski.
District Health and Wellness met this afternoon. I don't have as long of an update as I normally do. Just a few updates for you, though. SEDEXO, we had a discussion with Shawna from SEDEXO. They have ruled out the composting and waste reduction programs fully in the schools. And Garvin is going to be the next school up to create recycling rangers, which is where the kids actually get to participate and help with the composting and recycling. And that is in partnership with Bootstrapped Composting, Rhode Island, I believe is the name. Also, we had an interesting discussion about straws. Did you know that single-use plastic straws are no longer allowed? It's regulations coming down from the state. So you're going to start to see, yes, in schools and in restaurants, you're going to start to see changes there in the school levels with the straws that are offered. So I thought that was interesting. The leafy green machine is up and running. They are working on getting some more traction with clubs. They would love clubs from various schools to kind of come visit, learn about it, and they're hoping to maybe have some middle school trips next year. The Future Chefs Competition was held last week, I believe. Ms. Smith was one of the judges, so she got to taste the food. There were six competitors from mostly elementary schools represented, and the winner was a young student named Huda from Garvin, who had a delicious stuffed grape leaves recipe. And her recipe now gets entered into the national competition. So that was pretty neat. From the Athletic Department, Kyle Cares, which is the program we approved, I believe, last meeting, is starting to roll out. They are actually having their kickoff event April 12th. It's going to be a unified basketball game during the day, and for juniors and seniors to attend. And the Active Minds Chapter is going to be doing a Green Bandana Day because green was Kyle's favorite color. So they have used a grant to buy bandanas, and they're going to pass them out. And they're going to speak to juniors and seniors that are gathered before the game, present what the club, what the chapter is about, and offer to have them to join it. And then we just discussed a few Rhode Island healthy schools initiatives that are coming up. There is a program called Be Real, which deals with body positivity and changing the way that teenagers see their bodies. Before that, this has been on, you know, disordered eating and what to avoid. And this is kind of more, look at all the great things your bodies can do. So we're going to try to get some more information and explore the different options that are offered there. We talked about the solar eclipse, because I don't know if people realize, but the timing of it is such that it coincides with the end of the school day. High schools are already out, and middle, middle schools are out, but elementary schools are either recessing, going to be recessing, or on the bus. So, and, and just Garvin, I believe, is having a special after-school event where families can come and join. And all the schools have glasses. They were telling me they've ordered glasses so they can watch. There's even going to be changes to athletics that day, because RIL has put out things that said, watch out for practices and transportation between the hours of, I think, basically 2:45 and 4:30. We discussed an upcoming free virtual Zoom presentation that's being put on by Bradley Hospital. It's called Sleep and Behavior: Healthy Development and ADHD in Teens. We're going to try to push that out to families in the district in case anyone would like to tune in, any parents would like to watch that. It's going to be on an upcoming Saturday. And we were notified that Ashton was the recipient of a Recession Rocks Award. And because of some special activities that they implemented, some athletes from PC are going to become, coming to the school to do a Q and A with students. And it's actually coordinated with School Spirit Week, so they're going to make sports day that day as well. And next month, we're very excited to get a preview from Mr. Demana's office of the new K-5 health education curriculum that they're working on.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogalski. I am making a slight switch to the agenda. We normally have had comments from the public before, our old and new business, but I missed it on the agenda this week, and it's after that. But I would like to move comments from the public back up right now to be before old business and new business, so that we can hear from the public. So our next agenda item right now is comments from the public. So if anyone from the public would like to speak, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address. No? Oh, okay. This is a mood issue. Okay, then we'll move on to old business. Item A, Discussion and or Vote on the 2024-2025 School Calendar.
Madam Chair, is that time? We need to have you vote tonight. Just to review again, you have options A, B, and C. Just to review, option, they all start on 9/3 after Labor Day, right? Option A ends on 6/23. And by the way, the graduation date, you always want to know about that, right? Option A, it looks like potentially being June 25. Option B, the school, you have, I should go back. Option A, there's a full February vacation. That's option A, right? Option B, you have no February vacation, and graduation would be a little earlier, be June 18, tentative. And last time you, we talked about this, you wanted an option C, as I remember it. So we gave you an option C, and that one, you're on the break from 17, 18, and 19 of February, and your tentative graduation could be around June 20, last day of school, June 18. So once again, you have three options, or if you want to have a fourth option, you could do an amendment and make a fourth option. But I need to get your input on the calendar.
Okay, Mrs. Vogel.
Dr. Thornton, thank you for the three options. I truly appreciate it. I get the need for a full break. I love a full break. I think it's important for the teachers, for the students, for everyone, completely. But I also understand, starting after Labor Day, is not like it was done in the past. So that does push the year longer. So I do like the option C, because you have a five days off in a row, and then you go back for two, and then you're back in, but you're not getting out as late. So I think that could be a great option, as well as, I know for construction, that's why we start after Labor Day. Do we ever see ourselves going back to before Labor Day? And when do we think that would be?
Has to be when construction is done, I would imagine. Dr. Thornton.
2026, 27? Sorry. I asked a question when you walked away.
When you think about it, this next year is the last year where we have another school being renovated while we have someone relocated. If BF does go forward, that's being built, we're actually looking out the window at BF. So really, after this next year, you could potentially go back before Labor Day, I think. One more year. This year's, this is the last year you have, I think you really have to go before Labor Day.
25, 26?
I'm not going to go. Positive thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion? Sorry, Mr. Collins. We can make a motion in a sec. We'll have all this discussion first.
We're already, we're already motioning for option C. Okay, so if it's open for discuss- Oh, she did not? Oh, okay. Good. Even better. So obviously, this is the time of year where I talk about option A and the importance of February break. You know, there was a survey done. I had asked, we all received a copy of the survey from the CTA. 62% of the 230 respondents asked for February break. Now, there's probably about 200 or so who didn't respond. I was talking to Dr. Thornton about this on the way down here. And I think if you, if you don't work in education, you could easily misinterpret that lack of response as indifference, like the teachers don't care. The bottom line is, and what I told Dr. Thornton was, I said, it didn't, no way did he say it was indifference. But what I don't think a lot of people realize is the day that a teacher has, and some teachers, I get these emails all day long, and a lot of them I just don't get to. And I'm guessing a lot of that lack of response had to do with just being utterly exhausted at the end of the day by the time they get to the email. So, you know, and I know some people have taught, and if anybody's watching at home saying, oh, I taught, I, I'm happy without February break. I don't know when people taught, but the last five years have been unlike anything else. People are absolutely fried, and they need that break. At least the teachers are telling us they need that break. Now, obviously, the committee can decide otherwise, and there are other factors. There are other stakeholders involved. But I will consistently support February break. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Similar to what Mrs. Vogel is saying, I like the idea of the three-day President's Day plus two extra days in February, the option C, because of the lateness of the starting of school with all the construction. And then looking at the calendar, if you specifically look at those dates, what concerns me on the way that this one falls to is that if we went with a full week of vacation, that takes us to June 23rd. June 23rd is a Monday, but June 19th, the Thursday before, is also a holiday. So that would mean that you'd be out of school on the 19th for a holiday, back in school on the 20th, go through a weekend, back in school on the 23rd. And I just think that that's when we start to see all of our attendance dwindle. And to me, I agree that people like the break, and I think that option C gives that good break in the split, to have the three days and give something, and then have you out of school in what is, looks like a five-day period versus just a few days. So I would like to make a motion, if possible, to support recommendation C.
Okay, Ms. Smith makes a motion to approve option C. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski, for discussion.
One thing to keep in mind, and I guess I would be one of those teachers that Mr. Collins was referring to, that said, when I taught, I loved February vacation. I love not having it. Yeah, I, I have spoken. You know how I feel about it. It's wonderful, but it also pushes teachers getting out almost in July. One thing to point out, there are no snow days built into the calendar next year. One single snow day, we are looking at June 23rd, June 24th, June 25th. It's going to keep pushing back, because this year we have those three days. And next year, we have a primary day. We have an election day. We have PD days. We have so many things. So I just would encourage people to keep that in mind. I understand the break is important. I do. I really, really do. However, just as Mr. Collins is hearing from the teachers that want it, I'm hearing from the teachers that do not, and probably because they know how I feel about it. And they want to get out of school early. Right now, this year, we're already having teachers and kids stay three days past the last day of school to be present for graduation. It's going to be the same thing next year. You have students, again, I spoke about it before, we have students who are missing orientations. We have a student who is missing his boot camp date and has to put off school because of how late this is. This is, it's not just a vacation. It looks ahead to affecting graduation. It looks ahead to the last day of school. It looks ahead to so many things. So I just, I love teachers. I really do. But I'm also hearing from the ones that do not want it. And I'm sorry for the teachers that do want it. I understand. But just one thing to keep in mind, just especially with no snow days built in, because the 19th is a holiday. So even if we stopped on the 18th, the 19th, if we have a snow day, we're pushed to the 20th or the 23rd, or a flood day, or a weather day, or any kind. So that's all.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Thornton.
An update from the CTA. I now have a new note saying 82% of 362 want A, just to correct the record. That's the update I have.
But wasn't that before option C was available? That was when they just voted on option A or B, I think.
I'm just passing along the message.
Yeah, so. So we have a motion on the table, a motion by Ms. Smith to approve option C, second by Mrs. Rogalski. I was wondering if I should do a roll call. All in- Oh, Mr. Fiorella.
I was always behind the shortened February break, you know, before COVID, back when all the districts wanted to do that so that we can get kids out earlier. However, no district ever actually did it. So we were left alone. And one thing that we learned from COVID is how important that February break is, to get everybody away from each other, quite honestly, to reduce sicknesses in the buildings, get the ability to deep clean. Also, we've constantly had maintenance issues that we were able to address during that time. I mean, I know it's tough, but quite honestly, people's plans for after-school cannot really affect our decision. I don't believe, we're here for the public school system, not for people's plans, not for people's summer jobs or going into the-
Or going to college?
Going to college, listen, if, right, because boot camp will always be there at the next time round. Exactly. That's why. I mean, I used to go to school until the June 24th every year. But I know that was in the dark ages. But I will be supporting option A.
Option C is what we have a motion for right now, and we have a second for that. Personally, I think option C is a great compromise between option A and option B. So we're going to do this as a roll call, because I'm just not certain how this is going to go. So it is for option C. That's the motion we have right now. If you say yea, it's in favor. If you say nay, it's not in favor. So we're going to go in order. Mrs., do you have, yes, Mrs. Dunham?
Yes. Okay, procedural question, just because I, I will fully admit that I am completely torn between C and A. If C gets voted down now-
Doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass, thank you.
Yep.
Doesn't pass, is there another, and then, oh, actually-
Another motion would have to be made.
Another motion would have to be made. Okay, I just wanted to know procedural.
Yep. Okay, this is for option C. Mrs. Vogel.
Yea.
Mrs. Rogalski.
Yea.
Mrs. Feather.
Yea.
Mr. Fiorella.
Nay.
Mr. Collins.
Nay.
Ms. Smith.
Yea.
And the chair votes yea. It passes five to two. Option C is the calendar. Next item on the agenda is, item B, Discussion and or Vote to Approve Resolutions, SEPR 0324, 2024-36. Discussion and or Vote to Approve. So yeah, Mr. Collins?
Yes, we had, we had this in fiscal. Let me just pull it up in my, in that discussion there. My screen froze. So we have, as Ms. Friedman mentioned, we do have the resolution, the grant-funded professional development leading diverse populations. This was presented, accompanied by a presentation on what it's for. It passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve Resolution SEPR 0324-36. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolution SCPR zero-three twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-six. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Vogel, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes seven to zero. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve amended resolution SCPR zero-three twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-four. Mr. Collins?
Yes, this was also tabled at our last meeting, as you outlined in the, uh, in your introduction. So yes, this did pass Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve amended resolution. Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve, Mrs. Vogel makes the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes seven to zero. The next item on the agenda, um, the committee is not going to take any action tonight on the transportation contract. We expect that to be on our agenda for our next meeting. Then moving on to new business. Item A, discussion and/or vote on fiscal year twenty-five superintendent's recommended school budget. Dr. Thornton?
Madam Chair, to kind of set the table and pick it up where we left off after our last workshop. At your places, I gave you a sheet, looks like this, and I'll kind of take you through it. It kind of captures the personnel items that we were talking about. And just to orient you, on top of the sheet, you see seven positions. So I stand corrected, we actually maintained seven jobs from S R. So we pulled back, all you can see from the middle schools, either essentials or just content areas. So we saved seven of those jobs which are student-facing, and those are in the budget right now that I'm giving to you. The next section, you see eleven CTA jobs and five ICSI jobs. I'll take you through them. Those are currently in the proposed budget I'm giving to you. Once again, take you through, point five, school psychologist Ashton, grade-two teacher for enrollment increases at Ashton, Garvin teacher ICAN special education, Garvin paraprofessional for the same program, BF M L L teacher, BF resource teacher. Uh, we have a school psych point five at Cumberland Hill, a preschool nurse. We have the school secretary at the preschool, and the custodian at the preschool. As you know, they're now a freestanding, um, school. Then we have the four McCourt content teachers, math, science, social studies in ELA, those are all proposed. And then we have the two district-wide buildings and grounds. Now, below that black line, we have what we called the parking lot last time. The first group is the parking lot we gave you to consider. And just to get, to get through again what those are, and the first parking lot, they are the three high school essentials jobs, which last meeting I recommended you take out because we had to find the funds to offset the state aid loss. So that, those are now in the parking lot. Then we have the district-wide director of culture and student services, once again, parking lot. Garvin, we have a reading specialist point five, which we talked about last time in the budget workshop as a need. We have the Garvin math interventionist, it's a one-point-O. We have the McCourt P E A P E. We have N C M S STEM. We have world language at both middle schools, point five, point five. We have a school counselor point five at BF and a school counselor point five at Garvin. The last group are items the committee talked about last meeting, and I have one correction as I take you through these. First, we have elementary school counselor, one-point-O. We have two of those, right? Two in a row, you see those. We have social workers, two-point-O, district-wide, so that's four. And then it should be elementary school psych, there are two of them, elementary school psych, so a total of six, right? Two guidance, two psych, two counselor, six F T E. That was proposed by, I think, Mrs. Vogel last time. You didn't vote it in, but you talked about it, so I put it in the parking lot. And then Mr. Collins last time talked about a point-five community facilitator. So I put that in the parking lot as well. So now, if you picture it, kind of like, uh, you know, below the line is not in, above the line is in. Mr. McGrath is ready at the keyboard. Should you make any changes, he would, as we discussed last time, raise the revenue ask to the town correspondently for every position you put in. Or you certainly could put it in fund balance, but I, I wouldn't advise that, it's already quite high. So I'm happy to just take your direction on what you want to do with the positions.
Mr. Collins?
So, you know, there are people here probably weren't paying attention at the last meeting. So we have, obviously have a lot of asks here, and we only have limited funds. And at our last meeting, so we, we kind of played around, so the, the superintendent has presented a budget with the, with a conservative estimate of the, what the town's gonna tax, uh, set the tax levy at. So even if we wanted a thousand jobs, the, the town is kind of bound by how much they can raise the taxes. So he's put a very conservative estimate in his, and Mr. McGrath as well, in their finances. So in order to accomplish a lot of these things, um, we would have to expect the town to raise the, uh, the tax levy, which, in, one of the things I'm very concerned with is in years past, what would happen is the school department would come in at four percent, and the town would come back and say, well, we can't raise it four percent. We're raising it two-point-eight percent. So then what we do is we go down this list right here, and we just have to haggle over what, what we're gonna cut. So one of the things that came out of our, our budget meeting on Tuesday that I suggested was, what we do is we play around with, you know, what's in, what we can add, we can take out, and then create a contingency plan. Like you have a parking lot, I'm talking like, you know, valet parking, you know what I mean? So if we get more than we're, we're asking for, if we're, we're successful in lobbying them, then we can go and say, all right, we already have that list. Conversely, if we don't get our ask, we don't have to scramble around and start going through this whole list and figure out what we're gonna cut. Is that, is that fair, that, um, I just want to make sure everybody understood what I was saying? So, because I don't want to get into a situation where all of a sudden we're in a meeting and, you know, there are seventeen jobs on the auction, you know, and we're haggling over what we're gonna cut, what we're gonna cut. So I think, so, and I think it's very valid, especially some of the things they were raising, especially the psychology piece. I, you know, under the current budget, um, or the two-point-five, the, the conservative budget that you've presented to the committee, all schools will have a full-time mental health professional in the building. There's no much shared time, so that's imperative. And Mrs. Rogalski, I don't want to speak out of turn, had correctly advocated that, you know, she's hearing from the teachers as well. You need more, because even then, but what I had suggested was, just the community facilitator position was piloted last year. It's a part-time position, it's in the thirty-thousand, thirty-five-thousand-dollar range. And we piloted it this year, and the, the community facilitator, they're also bilingual. And they're down at BF Thornton right now, and we, we, I shared a log of what they've been doing since they were hired. It's incredibly impressive. So now, while a community facilitator can't provide, you know, mental health evaluations, or do safety evals and all these other things, or do family counseling, or some of the other things that it, those entail, the reason I'm advocating for this community facilitator position is, first of all, it's a very cost-effective way. Maybe it doesn't solve our problems, but it frees up a lot of space. And I think this position would be perfect for McCourt. And I think the plan was always to pilot and add, add, but based on what we're hearing from what McCourt needs, based on some of the challenges they're facing, and all schools are facing these, a community facilitator at the very least will free up Mrs. Cruz, the secretary. And, uh, you know, and can free up Mrs. Carlson, the guidance counselor, so she's not dealing with things like, things that guidance counselors and teachers deal with outside of their normal. Finding baskets for Thanksgiving, Christmas drives, and fundraisers and things like that. So it does free them up, and they also do a lot of community outreach, helping people who are, uh, non-English-speaking families, where to find their buses, how to sign up for free lunch, those type things. So I, and the other thing we've advocate, I've advocated to put back in, it's very clear that Garvin, um, needs the reading specialists, the point-five that has been kind of moved, shifted around. Again, that's a point-five position. The two positions I'm advocating for, I'm estimating to be about a seventy-five-thousand-dollar ask. Whereas the psychologists, that's a very important thing, you hire six psychologists, you'll get about six-hundred-thousand dollars. So it's not perfect. I know we all want all of these things, but I, me and I have talked to a few people, where I'm trying to find solutions, um, in the absence of a money tree or, you know, an unlimited budget. So I'm advocating for the reading specialist and the community facilitator at Garvin as well. And I think that's something that the town, we can ask the town for, and I don't think even it's even a big, uh, take from fund balances either. So, thank you.
Mrs. Feather.
Hey there, quick question, thanks. Um, I just wanted to find out, that, so that's a half position. Is that thirty-five thousand, is that half of thirty-five thousand, or is it thirty-five thousand?
No, it's thirty-five thousand. We, we, actually, when I, when I actually was talking about this position, this position, if you remember correctly, came out of, uh, just Achievement Subcommittee. When BF Norton, uh, you know, the BF Norton, uh, team was in there, and they were talking about some of the challenges they're facing. But when you talk to Mr. Santana, the M L L teacher, she, she was like, oh, this is what my day looks like. And I'm like, and what had happened was, in my district, they piloted us about eight, nine years ago. So, um, they, we have a whole, I think we have twelve community facilitators in Taunton, all speaking different languages. So I put, uh, the Taunton contact, in, in contact with Ms. Blanger from, uh, Mr. Demana's office, and they, they got a job description, and we, we tried out. Remember at the time, too, we were dealing with kids not getting school lunch forms in time, and especially kids who, uh, newly, students who have newly arrived to America, they might not be, they might be a little nervous to, who do I talk to? So i- if nothing else, it's a community relations outreach. And one of the biggest issues we have, especially at McCourt, this is why I thought of this the other night, uh, Ms. Storm was talking about some of the attendance issues they're having. And, you know, this is a major thing that the state is, uh, uh, Governor McKee has made it very clear that attendance has to go up. Students who aren't in school don't learn. But the problem is, we have truancy and all this other stuff, all these very, very important resources. But some of these, sometimes you just have to go to the house and say, what's going on? And sometimes, we found from the log, if you read it, there are extenuating circumstances that, you know, that we were able to work with kids to get them into BF Norton, to get, get the education. And quite frankly, just based on the, the jobs that people are currently doing at any school, there's only just so many hours in the day, you know, I was talking about emails earlier. But when could a guidance counselor or an M L L teacher find time to go to the house after school? And, you know, so I think this is, it's not the, the perfect solution, but I, I think it's a step in the right direction, given our financial constraints.
Thank you. And I want to say, like, I'm fully in support of this position, I think, and I saw the log that you shared about all that, um, all that our community facilitator's been doing. I think it's amazing. I would like to make the point that if Governor McKee would like to, uh, improve attendance, then perhaps he should follow his funding formula.
Mrs. Rogalski.
Just to, I would like to echo Ms. Feather's sentiments first. Maybe give us the money that we're supposed to get, and we can do a lot more with it. But again, to fully, I completely support the community facilitator position, totally on board with that, have no problems with that whatsoever. However, I think the mental health aspect is equally important, and I would argue so vigorously for that. Because no matter what a community facilitator does, if a student is disrupting a classroom, if a student is disrupting a teacher, if a student, if a teacher is having issues, a community facilitator cannot solve that. If the mental health of the students, is there more than one student or more than five students, whatever. And, and I understand, you're thinking preventatively, and that maybe they'll solve things ahead of time. But I would just argue, not, not against the facilitator, again, I'm in favor of it, but also that the mental health aspect is equally important, because they're not going to learn anything if we don't provide the mental health support for the students to allow the teachers to work, to allow the administrators to administrate. Like, it's, it's, I just, I think it's, I just don't think it's an option.
No, and then I think, no, in response, I think, I thought I had already kind of addressed it. No, I, I'm in total agreement. The, the question isn't them providing mental health services, but what happens is the mental health professional, even like guidance counselors, you know, or, or, you know, remember back in the day, it was just the guidance counselor. No, i- it's not designed to replace, it's designed, because school psychologists or a social worker does far more than just counsel kids and deal with crisis. They wear many, many different hats, which are well beyond their pay grade, and just because they're good people and they, they take a holistic approach. What I'm saying is just, this is one way, just to free them up from doing those things, and they can replace, uh, and even, like, we rely on building administrators from other schools to provide interpretive services, you know, and when we've tried to find somebody bilingual, um, even, like I said, Mrs. Cruz is secretary. I mean, how many calls does she get? And the community facilitator, according to the log, is, is helping with a lot of those things as well. Again, it's not perfect, but it's just trying to free people up so they can do what they were hired to do.
Um, I don't know if this will be homework, and I apologize if it is. How many mental health professionals, what's the breakdown by each school, and how, oh, we have it, I'm sorry. Ignore my question completely.
Going, going off of that, again, it frees up the people when they're there, but you've got half positions, you've got sharing between the schools. They're, they're not there to do the work.
No, and I'd actually preface my, you're not gonna have that anymore, because under the, the, the original proposal now, under the proposal that Dr. Thornton has presented to the committee, when it's, if that passes at the two-point-five percent, every school will have a one F T E. So there's no more, there's no more sharing. There might be, yeah, there, there won't be any more sharing in that regard like we have this year. And that's why we've already, I think we've already addressed that, and quite frankly, we could use two at each school, four at each school for that matter. But at lea- at the very least, as I said early on, they'll have one at each school.
Mr. Fiorella.
Dr. Thornton. The budget as it stands right now includes, uh, all the positions that are being S R funded.
Yes.
As well as everything in that second block.
Correct.
Okay, because all the other conversation, although it's worthy, and it's all important positions that we need to fill, I think this is not the time to be discussing it, because we'll be lucky, between the state and the town, if we don't have to cut what's already in the budget before we start even adding anything else. So at this point, I would actually make a motion to approve the superintendent's budget.
Second for discussion.
Mr. Fiorella makes a motion to approve the superintendent's budget as is, with the second by Mrs. Rogalski for discussion.
This goes back to what I was saying on Tuesday, which is, you don't get anything if you don't ask. And so I know there are financial issues at the town, I understand it, but if, and, and maybe we won't get, may, maybe he'll be right, and we won't get the money, and we'll need to cut from what we already have in there. But there's no harm in asking for the full four percent that we need. And it's been demonstrated that we need it. And right now, I would just like to say, right now, yes, we are a top district. But if our teachers are burning out, and if they're leaving, that ends. And so I just, I don't understand the hesitation to ask for more, because if they don't want to give it to us, they will say no. If they can't give it to us, they will say no. But it doesn't hurt to ask.
I would say something that's a little different this year than way back. This is my eighth year on the school committee, and I remember when we first, when I first started getting involved, we would ask for the full amount. And at that time, we actually were in a position where we would have to cut positions, not add positions. We would have to cut positions if they didn't give us the full four percent. And then we spent, um, several years working with the town to really get a good understanding of what is feasible and achievable with the constraints that we have as a town against the, the levy, which I still don't even fully understand, but, um, all of the other things. So then we made a concerted effort to say, we want to actually give a budget to the town that we think is doable and achievable, um, keeping in mind the financial constraints of the town. So that was a decision that we made, just a little, just a little history. So that we wouldn't be going in and asking for way more than they could ever give, that they just couldn't give us more. And there were many meetings where, you know, some of you were there, at McCourt, five hundred people. We were talking about cutting, um, middle school language, we were talking about cutting the arts. Like, it became a very contentious situation. We, the last few years, have taken the approach that we want to submit a budget that we think is achievable and doable, and helps us meet the goals that we want to meet, but also that the town could support. So that's just a little history. And, and this is, I just can never remember a time when we've been submitting a budget where we're talking about actually adding all of these positions versus, you know, eliminating existing positions.
I guess the challenge there is just we're growing, and most towns are not growing, so that's really the difference.
So, so then the last thing I just wanted to add to Mrs. Rogalski's point, you know, that, that is, hey, you could ask for the full amount, and they can only give us what they can give us. And, and that is certainly an approach we could take, to ask for the full amount, knowing that realistically, as, as the mayor says, it's a math problem, that it, it might, the math might not work out. So that's an option. it might, the math might not work out. So that's an option. So, so I just wanted to give a little bit of that history of the way that we have handled it in the past. And if we do decide to, if we did decide to go in at the four, the full 4% ask and they came back and the math doesn't work and they can't do it, then we're talking about cutting some of these positions that are not existing positions, which is good. We're not talking, we're, we're, we're not talking about cutting teachers. We're talking about wanting to add more, which is what, of course, we, we would love to do. So just a little context. Mr. Fiorella, then Ms. Smith.
Dr. Thornton, how much with your budget are we, are we allocating from our fund balance?
The fund balance is 1.1 million, but I would also just reiterate, we're also using some one-time money from the electrical fund of 486, I believe. So you're around 1.6 of a structural deficit.
Yeah. See, my concern is really just digging a hole that we will not be able to get out of next year, or you won't be able to get out of next year. And then at that point, we'll be essentially just laying off people, ending programs, all kinds of stuff that we're going to not, because it's happened in the past and I, I just, we can't be so reliant on our surplus.
It is definitely a risk. If you use one-time amounts to try to fund positions, then the money won't be there the next year.
That's what we're doing.
Right. Ms. Smith.
Thank you. The amount that we're asking for in our budget right now from the mayor is 2.5% of the maximum 4%. So it's not quite a conservative number. It is a good, solid number. The town charter only allows the town to increase the property taxes, if that was the case, by 3%. The levy, I apologize, the levy by 3%. Sorry, ma'am, mother. So, you know, the school is a big portion of this town's levy. So it, even if we went in at 4%, then what we're doing is saying that the police, the fire, all of these other things, it's okay if you're not going to get anything, we just need it here. The presentation that Dr. Thornton and Mr. McGrath have given us and put a lot of time in with Mr. Demana and all of the administration team have taken what was the wish list of 43 positions and have whittled that down continuously to get us down to where we are in the proposal at the 2.5%. That does include the use of 1.1 million from our fund balance. Fund balances are the last thing you want to touch. And to, to Mr. Fiorella's point, we're not going to be able to sustain that. We cannot take 1.1 million or more from our fund balance each year to, to offset it. The other side of that, that we know that we're all aggravated with, is that General Assembly has a funding formula. That funding formula has lapsed. The governor put out his budget and cut $26 million from schools in Rhode Island from the budget. So the funding formula was changed as it relates to inflation numbers used to create the, the, the actual number. That left us $500,000 or more sure of what we had anticipated were the funding formula that was used all these other years appointed to us. We are one of a few districts that are increasing our students. That's critical to us. We're not losing the students, we're gaining the students. And yes, we're very thankful, we heard the other day, we did receive another 100,000 estimated into our funds from the state because of our increase in enrollment. That's fantastic. But we, we cannot rely on the funding formula going forward. We already just saw a cut of the funding formula that took $500,000 out of our pockets. And then we have the situation with the town where if we walk in and say 4%, when we've just spent the last, I know, three years since I've been on the school committee, working diligently and collectively with the mayor and the town council, the first thing I can hear coming from town council is, you told us those S positions were not going to be needed. You told us that we were going to need one, then you told us you were going to need three of them. Now we have seven on here. It's bounced all around. And the town council has asked us that continuously. If you're putting the positions out there with the escher funds, don't expect us to fund them in the future. Dr. Thornton, I think, has found a way to balance this budget. If, if we take it with the way that it is now, using 1.1 million of our fund balance, getting 2.5% in, I think it's a fair ask. It doesn't mean that every single thing that's in the budget, we have to approve. If we get the 2.5% from the town, we can then go back and say, Dr. Thornton, we want you to come up with different ways for this position or that position to be added and let's rejig things. Or we could say, hey, we're all going to go fight the governor and we're going to try to get our money back and then we can do something else. So I, I, I don't want to fight the wrong battle here, I guess, in the end. And I, like Mr. Fiorella, do support what the superintendent has put forth.
Mr. Collins and then Mrs. Feather.
All right. So Mrs. Smith reminded me, we were talking about the, obviously the, being shortchanged in the funding formula. This is also my annual reminder, death taxes and me bringing up BVP and trying to fight for verification, usually at the same meeting. But as a reminder, the number's gone down, but I think it's $3.1 million we are paying to an underperforming school district that we're required to pay currently because of the charter. I also am reminded that Burraville just voted, I don't know what the legal ramifications are, Burraville Town Council voted to cut funding to their charter school, which I believe is Rise Academy. So I don't know how that's going to play out. I'm not advocating for that, but I'm just saying we're spending a lot of money. But I would say, as a part of what we're talking about right now, and that money would obviously pay for everything we want. But I want, Mrs. Rogalski brings up a great point when it comes to funding. One of the concerns I have is that when we go to the town for, for a bigger ask, you know, $600,000 for, and again, do not, and I know most people say this, just because you, we can't, in my opinion, I don't think we can afford it, doesn't mean it's not valued. It's so, you know, sometimes in this position, people say, you know, just because you, you voted against it means you don't think that's important. No, there's only so much money. But that's why the, the positions, clearly, the two things that I, in my opinion, that are highlighted, that all of these are important, but the things that I, I find to be essential, given what I know about the district, not that all of them, are the Garvin reading specialist, the .5, and the community facilitator. I think we would have an easier time going to the town going, you think it could help us out with an extra 75 grand as opposed to 675,000? So that's just my opinion. I would really, I would hope the committee would support that, but we'll see how that plays out too. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Feather and then Ms. Smith.
I was going to say something similar about the, the BVP piece. Again, and again, this kind of falls at the feet of the governor because he not only is responsible for underfunding us, we're ignoring the funding formula, but also for BVP. Fun fact. Quick question. With, if that, if the funding formula had been actually honored, we wouldn't be taking a million out of our balance, would we?
We'd do fund balance down to 600,000. I'd reduce fund balance and give you a much more reasonable, it's at 1.1 right now.
Right.
At 500K more, it'd be about 600-ish fund balance.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. There was one other thing. Oh, I guess I should ask it offline. I'll ask it offline. Thank you.
I just want to add to that too. Even if that was reduced, remember we have 468,000 that's coming to us because of the electrical settlement and all of that issue that had happened. That's a one-time. If that was not here in the budget, we would be looking at 1.6 million as it is now from our fund balance, and that's with the 2.5%. So that's the concern. Even if we were to get 4% and put these other positions in, which I'm not undervaluing these positions whatsoever, I'm trying to find a fiscal balance. If, if we put them in, how could we sustain that next year? Because that 468,000 wouldn't be there. We could have other funding formula issues. And then we have 1.1 million already used from our fund balance.
Mr. McGrath, the 1.1 million, that's what is in the current budget? The, the budget you've submitted to us, what was the amount again, coming out of fund, fund balance?
Yes, the 1.1 million. Yeah. I believe you guys got the new sheets after Tuesday night's meeting. We, we put out an update with that. So 1.1 is the fund balance.
It represents what percentage of our total fund balance?
So we currently, it sits at 5.3. So what is that, um?
20%?
20%.
Ish. 20%. We'd be using 20% of our fund balance.
Correct.
That, to, part of that to fund positions that, again, would get compounded in each year thereafter.
Correct, yes.
You have to figure out how to fund those.
Correct, yes.
Dr. Thornton?
I reiterate from last time also, when we look at the budget, we look at, you know, the next year, the year after. Last half full, we'll hope enrollment keeps going up. As you know, we got another 30 students from October 1 to March 1. It keeps climbing. More kids, more state aid. If the other trend continues and less BVP kids go out, that also is a nice trend that continues. So it'd be great if those two trends continue, but we can't bank on that. Right now, we don't assume it's going to go up or down conversely.
Mrs. Feather? All right. I'm going to ask it online. Is there, is there any legal way the town can pull out of BVP or no?
I'll defer to the lawyer on that.
Oh, Steve loves me. Sorry.
I've answered this question about 1,000 times.
I know, I'm sorry.
The answer is, you can stop paying the fee to BVP, but statutorily, your state aid would be taken for that amount. So, and there'd be legal fees probably if you wanted to do that as well. So.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith and then Mr. Collins.
I just want to reconfirm too. If we were to look at our student numbers and our funding, we are down about, is it $1,000 on average per student because of the BVP funding as well? Is, is that what the number was, Mr. McGrath?
Yeah. When I, when you look at the sheets we presented on last Thursday, yeah, it stands at around 16,000 before and then you take that 4 million out of other charter schools as well and it brings us to the 15,000 number. So approximately $1,000 a student is going out the door.
For over 5,000 students. Mr. Collins?
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Adams. So when, I obviously wasn't on the committee when the charter, the charter school was approved. So the charter school is a charter. No, or whenever it was agreed upon or whatever you want to call it. So, so it, it just happened. So when they, that happens, the procedurally, somebody has to vote on it, correct?
No, to me.
I understand in this case, there was no vote taken.
So it was, so that's created. So my, my question is, if there's no charter, I guess, I don't know, I don't know how to ask this question. Because I was wondering, like, when you create a charter school, is it like that it? Do you have that charter school in perpetuity? Or is...
So there, there are different types of charter schools. There are three types of charter schools in the state of Rhode Island. One type is what's called a district charter school. So a charter school that exists within a school district. Providence has had some, Cranston has had some. Then there is what's called an independent charter school, Beacon, for example. And then there are these mayoral academies. They are all different to a greater or lesser extent. The first two generally have to comply with pretty much all of Rhode Island general laws that you guys do. The mayoral academy is given some passes on some of that stuff. I'm not exactly sure why that sausage got made by the legislature that way. But so that, there are three different kinds. BVP is a mayoral academy. The enabling legislation essentially says a mayor, mayors can create them. They do have a charter. I don't know what BVP says exactly, but essentially RIDE enabled, the Rhode Island Department of Education enables the charter school and they approve it. And so BVP is approved, RIDE, it was created by the four mayors, I think it's Central Falls, Pawtucket, Lincoln and Cumberland, whenever BVP was created. And I don't know the date, but it was quite a while ago now. And so there is no way to stop it unless it kind of stops itself almost. In other words, there's no way for you guys to stop it, if that makes any...
Is there any case law or any precedent of, of any municipality in the state challenging a charter? Or is it, would...
Do you mean, is there any? No, not really.
Okay.
Not really. Not, not, no. I mean, other than what I hear may be going on in Burraville with respect to this, which is, I, it's, what will happen is their state aid will be taken. It may be political and I'm, I'm not a politician, I'm a lawyer, right? So the, the state aid will be taken in that exact, in that exact amount.
Mr. Fiorella?
I just want to make the distinction that we're not against charter schools, that we are against, I'm speaking for myself, the mayoral academy. Because what they are is not a niche, they're not filling a niche. They are just a parallel school system that is taking our money. And what I find interesting in a republic that we live in, or locally is, you know, democracy, is that one person tied us into the mayoral academy without any approval by any school committee, without any approval from any town council. And it is impossible to extricate ourselves from that entity. And to answer the, Mr. Adams said he doesn't know why the sausage was made. My understanding is that the charter school lawyers themsel- the mayoral academy lawyers actually wrote that law. Because when you read the law, it's very one-sided. It's just, it, it boggles my mind. It just absolutely boggles my mind. And I don't understand how it's been allowed to do this without any kind of way for a town to make a decision to get out of it.
You're here.
Okay. I have a procedural question, Mr. Adams. Well, so I, I think it's an easy one.
Tired already. Go ahead.
So, I mean, we, we currently have a motion on the table to approve the budget as submitted to us by Dr. Thornton, and we have a second on that. Then we've been having a lot of discussion about all these other positions that could potentially, and I say these positions, but we're actually not making a decision about positions tonight. We're making a decision about the monetary amount related to the, to the positions that would then get added to the budget. So if someone wanted to make a different motion, we already have a motion, we have to vote on it. But if someone wanted to make a different motion, they, do they make the motion to increase the revenue from the town from 2.5% to 3.5% or, you know, making that, you know, just, just as an example? They're not, I mean, because if we were to say, oh no, add these six positions, it's really not what we're voting on tonight. We're voting on the dollar amount on each side to balance out so we could submit a budget.
I could, ma'am, sure. I think the easiest thing is if you can agree on what you want to add, then ask Mr. McGrath what the value is. And then he can give you the value for that and you can add that to the revenue.
And then it has to be, the motion has to be to increase revenue by X, by the number?
Or fund balance. I wouldn't recommend that.
Because the, the, what we have to submit is the budget, the dollar amounts.
Yes.
Okay.
All this staffing will work its way out end of May, early June.
Right.
I'm glad you asked the question because the positions I'm advocating for, I want to implement them in whatever happens. I, I want to try to get, I want to gauge the appetite of the committee to add these positions separate from the, the school psychology ones. So what I want to do is, and Mr. McGrath, is it fair to say that the community facilitator and that part-time reading specialist would be, my, my mouth is about $75,000. Is that accurate or high, more or low?
Uh, yeah, you could peg it at that amount.
So what I'm going to ask then is, because of those positions, the part-time Garvin interventionist in the community facilitator earmarked from McCourt, I'm, I want to, I want to add $75,000 to the, the budget for the ask in whatever capacity, just to see how the committee feels and I, just so we know where we, we move from there. And I'm sure Mrs. Rogalski would like to do the same thing or something like that. That way we're not voting on it and trying to get it after the fact. Because I, I do think going, asking the town for $75,000 more might be within reach.
Mr. Adams?
Just procedurally, which was the original question.
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second.
Yes.
We've done this before, but just to sort of say it out loud, whatever the committee wants to do, and I would include in that, if somebody said, I want to add a position, I understand the vague... I understand the vagary of that.
Yep.
I think the better way to do is, I'd like to, I'd make a motion to amend the proposal on the table.
Right.
To increase by a dollar, a percentage number, something that is definable, and then that motion may be seconded, and then that amended, then that motion to amend is voted upon, up or down. If the vote is up, then the original motion as amended is voted upon. So if somebody, if there is an interest in, in changing what Dr. Thornton has offered, and we have a motion on, then someone needs to make a motion to amend the motion.
So hold on, so we have a motion to approve it as is and a second to approve it as is?
Yes.
We don't vote on that first?
If you vote on that, you, you, well, sure, you can. If you do, it's over.
If it passes, right.
If it passes, of course.
Right.
Of course. The, many things can happen with a motion to amend. So I could say, I move to amend XYZ, and then it could be crickets, because no one seconds it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, so, I am in between both of these places right now. I'm in between the, you know, ask for 2.5 percent, which is the reasonable, we think, ask, and ask for the 4 percent, which is the, like, the, I just think, it's the dream, I just think the town can't afford it. But I'm, but I'm, I'm in the middle here somewhere, and I'm a little more in the middle than 75,000. Like, you know, I'd be more in the middle, like, uh...
So what we, what I think we can do then...
Two, 300,000.
Is we can keep testing the temperature of the committee, starting with my motion, and I would like to make a motion to amend the current motion to add to the budget $75,000 earmarked for, if possible, well, never mind the earmark, just, it's a budget. I would like to amend the budget to add $75,000 to the total expense line item.
Okay. So Mr. Collins makes a motion to amend, amend the proposed budget by 75,000. I'm still confused at why we have this original one, but 75,000.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah.
I made a motion.
I know.
He wants now to amend my motion.
I know, that doesn't seem fair.
Don't we have to vote on my motion? Or don't I have to retract my motion? Okay.
I know it's convoluted, and maybe I'm the only one who's following it?
Well, that's why you get paid the big bucks.
But if you, if you, once you vote on the motion on the table, the issue is decided, and you have voted upon the superintendent's, whatever it is, in this case, the superintendent has proposed a budget, your motion is to accept that, am I correct? If you guys vote 4 to 3, 5 to 2, 6 to 1, 7 to 0, in favor of Dr. Thornton's proposal, the issue is now over. There is no amendment. If, currently, there is now, as I understand, Mr. Collins has made a motion to amend your motion to add $75,000 to Dr. Thornton's budget. At this time, there is no second.
No, okay, sorry.
If there is a second, then you can vote on that amendment. That amendment could fail, and then someone could make a motion for 82,500.
Okay.
Or whatever number.
But not amending Mr. Collins' amendment?
No.
Okay, all right, just make it short.
You go one at a time on those.
Okay, all right, folks, I think we're, I think we're getting somewhere. So we have, Mr. Collins makes a motion to amend Mr. Fiorello's motion to increase revenue by 75,000 in the budget. Is everybody with me so far? If this does not pass, then somebody else can make a motion to amend Mr. Fiorello's original motion.
Can we keep amending it if Dennis, if Mr. Collins' amendment passes?
We have to vote on his.
So it's one shot?
That's it. If it, if it does not pass, then it, then another amendment can be made. Yeah, right now, we don't have a second.
Okay.
Once it passes, once it passes... Well, actually, you could do this, I mean, yeah, I mean, we could be here all night, of course. Yeah, you, if, if Mr. Collins is, if there is a second of Mr. Collins's motion, the paint is drying on the walls while I'm talking, if there is a second of Mr. Collins's motion, and it is voted in the affirmative, so now, you go back to the original motion. The motion that is now the original motion is, we vote to, we are going to vote on approving or not, Dr. Thornton's budget with $75,000. That could fail. That could fail. Notwithstanding, I know only lawyers could create these rules.
But if no...
And then you would have to have a new motion.
Okay, if nobody seconds Mr. Collins' motion, can somebody make a...
100%.
Another.
Uh, if, 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 doctor, if Mr. Collins's motion does not receive a second, then it dies.
And then someone else can make a motion to amend the...
Correct.
Original Mr. Fiorello's.
And if that doesn't receive a second, there could be, we could be here doing 100 of these.
Okay.
All the way through until tomorrow morning.
Okay, we're gonna try not to do that, but let's, okay, everybody, everybody with me here? Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Collins to amend Mr. Fiorello's motion to increase the revenue of 75,000 for the submitted budget. Do we have a second?
Well, no, because the motion can't just be to add $75,000, you have to actually make a motion of where that money's coming from. Well, you have to say that, though.
I said revenue, I did say it.
So it's, you have, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the both sides.
Smartypants, smartypants. Okay.
All I'm hearing is adding.
Seventy, okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Collins, do we have a second? Okay, the motion fails. Motion to amend fails. Mrs. Rogalski, please, please, go for it. You can make a motion.
Okay, I would like to motion to amend Mr. Fiorello's motion to add 300,000 to the revenue. That gets us to approximately, if my math is correct, a 3.125 percent ask. For the record, I'm still in favor of the 4.4 percent, but this at least gets us somewhere.
Okay, Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to amend Mr. Fiorello's motion to increase the revenue by 300,000.
We just need to identify where that, what the expense would be, so you'd also have to increase the salary line? Because right now, we have an unbalanced budget of an additional...
So you can just do that?
Yeah, so I would add, so if you look at, there's the line 51110, regular pay, you could increase that by $300,000, which would increase your salaries by 300.
Okay.
What he said.
Okay, so, let's see how the valley breeze gets this. So Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to amend Mr. Fiorello's proposal to add $300,000 to the, you know what I mean, 51... To revenue.
Uh, yeah. Revenue and expense.
Revenue and expense, that's it.
Ma'am, just for, for clarity, we need some direction, that's basically three jobs, what three jobs are...
Why do we have to label those jobs tonight?
You don't have to. You do not. It'd be good for us to know what you're, what you're thinking, that's all, if I could.
Because when the time comes back, when we get the final budget, we're gonna have to go through that.
I would suggest, not, not with respect to what Dr. Thornton just said, we have a motion, let's figure out whether there's a second to that motion.
Yes, okay. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? Mr. Collins?
I'm just, I just, I'm, I feel like I'm, I just want to make sure I'm getting this correctly. I asked for a $75,000 ask, and I couldn't get a second, and yet, is it a $300,000 ask? Can we get a second on that? Okay.
Was, can I ask a question? It's just, I thought Ms. Rogalski said, and this isn't to change anything, that that $300,000 turns the ask to the town to 3.125. Was that just math that you did? Okay.
It would be 1.521939. 3.1 percent.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? I'm gonna take a roll call over this, just for the fun of it. So you guys know how roll calls work now? Mrs. Vogel? Mrs. Rogalski?
Yay.
Mrs. Feather?
Yay.
Mr. Fiorello?
Nay.
Mr. Collins?
Nay.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
And the chair votes yay. It passes 4 to 3. Whoa, that's the first time I really had a tiebreaker. Okay, so you, you understand Dr. Thornton and Mr. McGrath?
Well, assuming...
Oh, sugar duggar. Oh, sugar duggar. So we voted on the amendment, now we have to vote...
Ms. Smith just gave me a kick save there, I think, because I missed that, yeah. You have to vote on the motion as amended.
Now we have to vote on the motion as amended. We are also going to take this as a roll call, because we're voting on the motion as amended. So, if you, okay, so you guys know, you vote yay, it's as we amended it. Mrs. Vogel?
Yay.
Mrs. Rogalski?
Yay.
Mrs. Feather?
Yay.
Mr. Fiorello?
Nay.
Mr. Collins?
Yay.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
And the chair votes yay, that passes 5 to 2. Okay, everyone, good job. I just like figuring that out. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion or a vote to approve homeschool instruction request for the 2023-2024 school year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Feather? Second by Mrs. Vogel? All in favor? Aye, opposed, that passes 7 to 0. Next item on the agenda, discussion or a vote to approve resolutions, Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am. We have four resolutions remaining, SEPI-03-2024-39 through 42. All four resolutions pass fiscal management, 3 to 0, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions, SEPI-03-2024-39 through 42. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Feather? All in favor? Aye, opposed, that passes 7 to 0. Next item, discussion or a vote to approve payment of bills, Mr. Collins?
No bills this evening.
Jeez, no bills, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the school committee comments, school liaison reports. Well, I guess I could do comments from the public. I don't know, well, because I switched it up, but... I don't know, Mr., wait, let me, Mr. Adams, can I not?
I'm not gonna stand in the way of progress, but I, that, you moved it up to the typical location, but I can understand that the public was uncertain about that, and I think you just wanted to come to that person, and, I just don't...
Yes, okay.
Good evening, my name's Carrie Carlson, I reside at Newell Drive in Cumberland. I'm also a Cumberland teacher, school counselor, and a Cumberland taxpayer. First, I'd like to speak to the school calendar. So I'm disappointed in your vote tonight. I feel as though the teachers who are in the classrooms every day understand what's best for teaching and learning, and that was not respected. You know, when you work for a town, there are not many perks in terms of things that can be done in terms of morale, like in the corporate world. And morale is, is challenging in this current times where we have challenges like we've never had before in terms of academic need, behavioral, social, emotional need. And I do think respecting the expertise and wishes of the teachers for the school calendar makes sense. I understand you're trying to look at other things that come into play, but I think our opinion should be valued, and I don't feel like it was valued this evening. Also, a shorter summer break also leads to less learning loss, so there is a lot of research out there that would be in favor of a shorter summer break. In terms of the budget, I understand budgeting is a very complicated and challenging process. However, again, it's disappointing that you're not going to ask the town for 4 percent. Cumberland has the lowest non-charter per pupil spending in the state of Rhode Island. We are having a difficult time attracting and retaining teachers. Some of that's due to our low salaries, since we are 25th when it comes to top step teachers, and we, and that is without counting things like longevity and advanced lanes, which most communities do have. But in addition to that, it also is because of the very large workloads we have, and it has come to a point where teachers are spending more and more time outside of the school day doing schoolwork, and less and less time with their own families. We don't believe it's sustainable, and I don't understand why you wouldn't ask the town for the full amount. There's no way we're ever digging out of the hole that we are in right now, being last, which is pretty sad, but we could at least try to take some steps to improve where we're at. Recently, 166, 166 union members met with the mayor, because we know that's where the money comes from, and we did that in an effort to make him aware of our challenges, so that we could get funding that would help us to continue the progress we're making, and to actually make more progress, because we all have the same goal, proficiency for all students. He said, send me what you need, I will do my best to fund it. What we need is more than 4 percent. And by the way, we shared this information at negotiations the other night. So we need more than 4 percent, but we understand we can't ask for more than that. And we're respectful taxpayers, most of us are taxpayers too. But I, I think the students of Cumberland, the families of Cumberland, and the educators of Cumberland need better. And I think it is fair and reasonable in these current times with the challenges we face to ask for 4 percent.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Ms. Smith?
I know that Mrs. Rogalski mentioned it earlier, too. We did have the Future Chef's National Challenge that was held each school. There was, there was recipes sent in from multiple different students from each of the schools, and then they picked top six students who then competed. That was a lot of fun, and I want to give a shout out, because Huda did win, and she made excellent stuffed grape leaves. I've already bought my pomegranate molasses, yes, that is a thing, so that I can make them that way from now on. But I want to also recognize all of the other students that participated. So Justine Pecul, Michael Emerson, Anna Wheeler, Huda, as I mentioned, Gavin and Henry Trudeau, and Ariana Garcia Gonzalez. So, great job to all of them, the food was fantastic, and they were really spunky kids. It was a lot of fun.
Any other comments from the school committee? Okay, vote to go into executive session?
All set.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Feather? Second by Mrs. Vogel? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes 7 to 0, we're adjourned at 8:42 PM. Thank you, everyone.